So it is after 6:30, so I will call the meeting to order. Can I have a motion for the adoption of remote participation?
They're moved.
Okay.
Okay, and now what we usually do is do our roll call vote and our practice is to do it alphabetically by town. And just as a little, you know, kind of guide Arlington comes after Acton and Lexington comes after Lancaster. So Pam Nurse, Acton, yes?
Dave O'Connor-Bolton, yes?
Steve Willdo, Concord, yes?
Ford Spalding Dover, yes?
Jennifer Leone, Lancaster, yes?
Judy Crocker, Lexington, yes?
Michael Ruderman, Arlington, yes?
We had Lancaster? Jeff's still in.
You're on mute, Jen?
I'm on mute.
No, I was on mute. We did have Lancaster.
Okay.
Jeff's still in need of me, yes?
Okay, and we don't have Alice. So first order of business is to welcome Michael and Judy to the school committee. We are really thrilled to have you here with us. I'm wondering if, you know, you can maybe just take a moment and introduce yourself. Say just a little bit about your interest in Minuteman and then we'll go and introduce the rest of the school committee.
Sure, I'll start on Michael. I'm resident of Arlington for these last 30 years. My wife Susan and I are Minuteman parents of our daughter Julia who graduated in 2016. I was a member of the general advisory board for about seven years and spent a lot of time in the campaign in 2016 for the two votes that we needed, one in Arlington, one in the district, to get Arlington to say yes to participate in funding the new building. And I've stayed involved with Minuteman since and it's a great pleasure to see a lot of folks again that I recognize. Hello to everybody.
We're really happy to have you as part of the school committee.
So I'm Judy from Lexington and I've been in Lexington also 30 years. My history with Minuteman tech is not as storied as my colleague. My three kids graduated from Lexington High in the Lexington system. I've always been involved in local education and David Horton, who is a friend, I have very big shoes to fill because he was, did so much great work on this committee. And I saw the opening and I thought I would throw my hat in the ring, so here I am.
Well, welcome. We're very happy to have you with us. So, um, moving on, oh, I skipped over for the good of the organization. What we often do at the very beginning of the meeting is, you know, take a moment. We call it for the good of the organization. If anyone has anything that you want to call out or highlight, that's happened since the last meeting. There's been a lot going on, but let's move on. You know what? I'm sorry.
If I can put in a plug for the school and the folks who are in charge of publicity, it was such a surprise and such an overwhelming pleasure to see the wall-to-wall news coverage of Minuteman's drive-by commencement. It was on all of the local TV stations. I mean, all of them. You couldn't miss it. It was a great day for Minuteman and a real coup for Dave O'Brien and everybody that helped him get that message out. It was a real thrill to see.
Yes, that was, it was incredibly exciting. So moving on, there were two of us whose appointments were up for renewal and both Alice DeLuca and I have been reappointed to the school committee. So this meeting is our reorganization meeting where we vote new officers. And, you know, before we start looking forward, we thought it'd be good to take a little bit of time and look backwards over the past year. You know, it has been an action-packed year, starting with moving into the new building, you know, and that just wonderful, wonderful ceremony that we had. Incredible work with enrollment and, you know, having full enrollment, you know, with a lot of work by the policy committee, our strategic planning, finance, and of course, you know, the last meeting where we had a vote on moving forward with the field. So there's been a lot going on. Last September, every committee set goals for the coming year and we thought it might be a good time to just reflect back on those goals and to have each committee have the opportunity to kind of report out on, you know, where we were and what's happened and where we've come. So shall we start with finance committee? Steve, I guess you are our lone outstanding member at the moment for the finance committee since, you know.
I have to find the goal, sorry.
They're on page five of the packet.
Right, right, right. Okay. So I think, you know, with Bob as the new finance director, you know, we were working very close with Bob. And, you know, as we all know, Jim Gamble, you know, Belmont leaving the district is a big loss. And Jim's financial mind was just, just really incredible. And, you know, me being on the committee just for, just finishing my first year, you know, he was, he was, he was, he was a good tutor for me. So, you know, our goal really was to, I try to identify the financial implications of the operation of the new building and the impact of a student enrollment on the budget. You know, we spend a lot of time looking at that. I mean, I think COVID kind of messed up, you know, some of that impact. But, you know, I think as we move forward and hopefully we get two members of the finance committee, we can really delve into it in this coming year.
Okay, thank you. And it probably would be helpful as you talk just to say where you're from so that our new members can get to know who's who and who's from where. And that was Steve from Concord. Any, anything, anyone wants to add? Shall we move on to enrollment? Jeff?
Jeff from Needham. So the purpose of the enrollment task force is, as it says, to assist the administration developing and implementing a plan to achieve full school enrollment. I won't go through the history of why this has been so challenging, but we had full enrollment this year and that's great. But we want to look forward to the future. We have some positive things happening with the new fields coming up and the publicity for the school. And we have some negatives, which is of course the inability to do the kind of enrollment that the school normally does. So we suspended, in effect, we suspended the task force because of COVID and the fact that we couldn't do the things that we normally do. The administration has been continuing their efforts, as you saw, for publicity and other things. And I expect that after reappointment, the task force will get back to work and we will work with the administration and figure out, or they will figure out and we will talk to them about how they're going to maintain the momentum for enrollment on this, what I expect to be a very difficult half year coming up. So that's about it for now.
Okay. Any other, any questions, any other thoughts on enrollment task force? Thank you, Jeff. Alice is leading the policy task force. It went from being a one-person task force to a three-person task force with Dave and Jim working with her. She did send me a short, a short report, which I am just going to read. So, you know, policy task force did a significant amount of work this past year. She said the major opus was the revision clarification and shortening of the admissions policy and the revision and updating of the Corey, Sori, fingerprinting, et cetera policies. They also worked on the design and implementation of a working demo of a GitHub-based archiving system with version control that shows who edited what policies and when. I think that this, you know, was a way of being able to better track the work on each policy. So any questions on that? Okay, and strategic planning, that was head up by Sue, but I think Ford is going to do the report.
Thanks Pam. I'm Ford Spalding from Dover. Sue Scheffler from Arlington was the chair of that committee. We had on the committee Alice DeLuca, Pam Norris and myself and Amy Peral, Assistant Superintendent, assisted us from the administration. There are really two goals we worked on. One is related to the school committee. The committee developed expectations for all school committee members. They were incorporated into a process which we had hoped, we hoped that district appointing authorities, selectmen, moderators, depending on the case, used in selecting and recommending committee members representing their town to the school committee. And a process for onboarding future school committee members. So there is a process to onboard Michael and Judy. And you might want to review that and Pam or I can help you with that. That information has been incorporated on the Minuteman website. And it was passed unanimously by the school committee. So if you go to the website, wwwminuteman.org, page 819, you will see a many, many documents that most school committees have memorized, but you don't need to do that. But we all should be taking a look at it again to see what's there because it's, this, this is a difficult school committee to be on in terms of, it's not like just being on a Dover school committee with Dover residents. We're all separated and we only meet really monthly unless we're at subcommittees. So being in a district is a little different. So I recommend that everybody go back and reread or look at it for the first time. The second goal dealt with Minuteman succession, succession planning. The committee met with three consultants, Glenn Kuchar from AMASC, Edward McCormick, who's a consultant out of Chicago from Hazard Young and Ada, and Art Bettencourt from NASDAQ. And what we came away with, with talking about them is we really need to, the school committee needs to sit down and decide what kind of traits are we looking for in, for the leadership at the school. And we had a retreat on a Saturday morning, ably assisted by some members of the administration. And in order of preference, here were the traits that we think are important for the school for the next five to 10 years. Communication, collaboration, interpersonal relationship, building skills. It was number one, attracting, identifying, retaining talented staff. Number two, a thought leader in CTE and workforce development. Number three, proven leadership success from wherever that person was. A knowledge of CTE, mass general laws and regional governance. Six, ability to delegate, have accountability, and finally, a visionary. So that's what this school committee came up with. The future school committees may work on something else. Our committee really now is done. We're on hold. I would suggest that we maintain the committee, but it'd be a very quiet committee. That's my report.
Thank you, Ford. Any, any questions or anything anyone wants to add? So I think after we, at the end of this meeting, elect new officers, at that point, the new officers will work on, you know, sort of reviewing the committees, committee membership. And at our next meeting or subsequent meetings, we'll start reforming our committees. And, you know, very much, you know, we'll want to be having conversations with our two new members on your interests and skills and where you would like to be participating. Speaking of upcoming meetings, one thing I would like to just put on the table right now is the possible, usually we go from our July meeting to a September meeting, take the month of August off. Just with all the uncertainty that's going on, the current environment, I'm recommending that we poll the school committee about finding a date in August to put on the calendar for a potential meeting. So we'll be there if we need it. If we don't need it, we can always cancel it. But just because there is so much going on with school reopening, that it may be a good idea for us to plan on convening in August. Jennifer?
I would say I'm available any Tuesday in August except for the 18th. That's the suffrage anniversary date and that's special to my daughter. So we're having an event. So other than that, I'm good with it.
Okay, that sounds good. Probably, Julia, would it make sense for you to poll the committee after the meeting? Rather than trying to.
Yes.
Okay, so look for something from Julia right after the meeting so that we can see if we can get a date on the calendar, but that's good to know, Jennifer. Next, under the chair report was review of draft superintendent goals for the 2021. And I believe, Ed, you are meeting with your leadership team next week. Is that right?
Yeah, we start our annual, we do a annual retreat. We start Sunday afternoon where we're going to review the superintendent goals, the school goals. As you know, we try to integrate all of them, so we're all working from the same, on the same page and we collaborate with one another. So that starts in our August meeting, there'll probably be a real draft of it. Today I met with Michael and Judith and I gave them a copy of my current goals and the summary document at the end of the year around what we've achieved this year. So they're probably going to look a little different this year, but I look forward to sharing those with you in the August meeting for sure.
Okay, thank you. Well, moving on to superintendent's report.
Sure, thank you. On page five, no, is it five? What is it? Seven, page seven. We really tried, before COVID, even before COVID, we were trying to fill all our positions we anticipated prior to the end of the school year. And we were successful with that until a few days ago when an engineering teacher that we had offered a position to and who had signed a letter of intent with us took another position. But we have hired our chemistry physics teacher, you may recall Gary. So Terrace retired from Minuteman after 30 some odd years. We've hired a social studies teacher who was a paraprofessional with us and is now licensed to teach. So Tina, who's with us tonight, is our robotics and automation technology teacher. Jack Lilliburn, multimedia teacher who hails from some time in Hollywood and has worked with some, on some movies you may have heard of, is with us. Jacqueline will be our guidance counselor and she was a, she did her student teaching for guidance counseling here with us a few years ago, so we know her. Aaron Spencer is our .5 time animal science teacher. And Annie Quill, who we just hired as a registered nurse, not a school nurse, but a registered nurse. And so we have a school nurse and a registered nurse. And then we reposted our engineering position. We're really pleased with the, with the process, even though it was all on Zoom. All the interviews were on Zoom. We did have some folks come in for tours. We're really looking forward to working with folks.
Ed, could, could I ask you to pronounce or to read off that list again by first and last names just so that I can get the, get how they pronounce the names in my ears?
You could probably pronounce them as well as I can, Michael. Carlos Cirkin, John Bucopulos, Tina Collins, Jack Lilliburn, Jacqueline Tomaszewski, Aaron Spencer and Annie Quill.
I think, Jennifer, did you have your hand?
You're on mute, Jennifer.
Oh, I'm sorry. So a quick question about the RN, is that for, for the CTE class or is it, why, why, what is she?
No, it's a school nurse. We had two school nurses last year, but one was an LPN.
Okay, so was it specified not a school nurse?
Because a school nurse is a Department of Education licensed position and would be part of the collective bargaining agreement. This person doesn't fall under that.
Going to be dealing with the students and any issues they have? Okay, thank you.
And we had planned for that before COVID, but it's certainly going to be an advantage for us and for our kids.
Yeah, thanks for reading those off.
Any questions on hiring? The capital skills grant award, I put this on a placeholder. The announcement for that award is still embargoed. You may recall, we've received two capital skill grants in the past, each for $500,000. We applied for another $500,000. I can't, we did get some good news unofficially and we're moving forward with, with the administration to work towards contracting. But Minuteman did get a capital skills grant. It wasn't for the full amount. And we'll be able to share the details with you in, in August or September. But we're, this was a grant that we wrote around the robotics automation program in our logistics engineering. So we're going to be able to move forward with those, with that equipment, which I'm sure Tina is very excited about. Any questions on that?
So, just a quick question. So the last meeting, it said that we, we were awarded $300,000 for that.
Yeah, I wasn't supposed to tell you that.
Oh, okay. All right. So just.
So just forget all about that, will you?
I was looking at the minutes.
Right, and not to say it right.
Sorry, I can't, you know, it's good news. I want to share good news, so.
Okay, all right.
We're not going to get into big trouble, but I just don't want to, you know.
Okay, thanks.
I'm trying to be good on all this stuff. Summer weekend, we put in the packet a summary of the grants that we applied for, for additional learning to kind of address the COVID slide. You know, kids will not have been in school for five months. Remote learning does not replace a teacher. So we're going to be assessing all of our kids, both for math and reading, as well as CTE competency slide. We're hoping that the grant will help us with that. We applied for a lot more than what they were telling us to. We anticipated about $120,000 to bring all our kids back to school over the summer. They're only going to give us 12. About two hours ago, I, I had inquired earlier with the Department of Ed where the awards were for that and they told me they don't know yet, so. But it's really important, you know, we're going to try to do something with summer school no matter what because it's really important that we try to acclimate kids and that teachers know where kids are in their learning prior to school starting, in whatever form we end up starting in. And there's also another pot of money just for CTE students, especially those students who were, may have been seniors or juniors who had to leave school prior to their taking their industry licensed examinations. So we want them to be able to have time to come back into the shops with teachers, practice their skills so that they can prepare for that exam. Because in some cases, not having that credential is holding up their ability to take a job. The fall reopening of school, as Jeff alluded to earlier, there was a, a letter from the, I'm just going to share it with you, a letter from the commissioner last week. It came Friday afternoon about fall reopening plans. So he's sending out to all of us a template this week that we are to complete and fill out by Friday, July 31st of a plan to reopen with, with three models. I believe I talked to you a little bit about that before. One model being 100% remote learning, one model being a hybrid, and then another model that really is an exercise for school districts to undertake that would determine what would it cost to bring student, all students in and face-to-face learning. The likelihood of that plan happening is, is I think, pretty low. But the strategy the commissioner is, is implementing here, and I think it's a good strategy, is for him to aggregate all those plans about what would it cost to do in-person learning and make sure that the legislature is aware of those costs. Because there are some in the legislature that are trying to cut funding to schools right now on a statewide level as well as a national level, as I'm sure you've heard about. So we've done a lot of planning around how school's going to open in the fall. And we have, and we've worked with teachers, we've got some input from some parents. And we feel we have something that our, our teachers are going to be able to implement without a lot of anxiety and rebargaining and all this other stuff that's happening in a lot of other places. Because we involved them right from the beginning, George and Amy and a number of administrative, I think we had 12 or 15 people in school, two full days doing the planning. And so the commissioner has asked further down in this letter that he's requesting we hold off announcing any final decisions about reopening until early August. And so I think the other thing that's, I really want the school committee to be comfortable with the plans, with the models, with what we've come up with, be able to ask questions about it, be able to get some more input. And I think that's going to have to happen earlier in August than, than the 18th anyway, but. So the, the hybrid model, which I think is the one where everyone's going to have to start with in most cases, maybe in the western part of the state where they have, you know, declining enrollment, they can appropriately distance their kids with masks and stuff like that. We're looking at a half-day, every-day, week-on, week-off model. And we're going to look more closely, beginning Sunday afternoon and Monday, about what would it take to bring all of our kids back? You know, we're in a position, we're in a brand-new school. It's a very healthy school, bright light, good air. We also have other buildings on the property that could potentially serve as classrooms versus trying to buy or bring in modular classrooms so that we can socially distance. But I just wanted you to know that we've been planning intensely on this with everybody involved. We still have more work to do. We're waiting on the template from the commissioner. But I'm going to honor his request and not really go into great detail about it because it could change. You know, as things do change, we've heard the six-foot distance requirement is going to be reduced to three foot with masks in the fall. We'll see. So I'll answer any questions I can about the fall opening, Jennifer.
Okay, so I just have a quick question because I think, given what's been happening in California and Florida and Arizona when opening happens, is there any discussion on how to deal with a surge if it happens in early October or?
Well, yeah, I mean, we would have to pivot, another overused word, to full remote learning, like we had done, but in a more structured way. Like the week-on, week-off that we're talking about, the week off, the week off-site is going to be much more structured than this past spring was, where there's actually, you know, a schedule and hours and. where there's actually, you know, a schedule and hours and, you know, periods of the day. And we're focusing on the core academics as well as special ed support services and reading. And and as far as one of the things that we've designed into our model is that the kids stay together in cohorts, because if there is a surge and we need to do contact tracing, it's going to be a much more organized contact, contact tracing if the kids are together. You know, how, how, how deeply we're able to do that, I don't know, but we'll see. Jeff?
So I just want to make sure that the reality is something's going to change or something is potentially going to change. And you, I, you obviously are thinking of that.
Yes.
So Ed, how are you going to handle the older teachers or the ones who's who have a family member who are immunocompromised?
We've talked to you know, our teachers about that and and we're going to try to be flexible and accommodating. There may be some teachers who have a documented medical issue themselves that want to be solely a remote learning instructor. There may be some folks who are taking care of kids if their school is closed. We're going to just try to accommodate that. We've had a couple of staff members express concern. And we've been trying to accommodate that with barriers. You know, teachers or or special ed staff who do testing where the student is right across from them, they'll have a barrier like you see at a a cosmetology shop or a nail salon, which I haven't been to in a while, but because ours is closed. So we're going to try to accommodate it, you know, there were, there were changes to the Family Medical Leave Act that came out of the CARES Act. We're aware of those, teachers aware of those. There's a lot of discussion at the state level amongst the AFT and the MTA. They've been meeting with the commissioner. There's a, you know, they have some ideas about what they want to see. And, you know, we're going to look at those and and try to accommodate them.
A lot of people up in the air.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm a superintendent in the school with the kids too, you know, and I'm in that risk group too.
Remote superintendenting?
That depends who you talk to. Some think I've always done that, you know.
So is there any discussion of early retirement for some people who are in critical?
We, at the state level, I haven't heard that. We offered early retirement notification incentive, which is in our collaborative bargaining agreement, collective bargaining agreement. We, the teachers and I met and agreed to waive the one year notification if someone wanted to go earlier. And we got two staff that to date that have taken advantage of that.
And can I ask, is there anything that, you know, without getting into all the details, is there anything in the commissioner's guidance that caused you to reevaluate any of your thinking?
Yeah, I would say yes. His emphasis that he's been, the last week, I would say, the emphasis on planning for full school onsite is something that we were not spending a lot of time on. And, you know, I learned from Julie Hackett's great report on, Julie Hackett is the superintendent of Lexington. She had a 60 page document, a draft document that outlined remote learning and a hybrid model. But there wasn't a lot in there about what would it take to bring all the kids back? And and there was a lot of blowback from that. And then since then, there's been an emphasis on the part of the commissioner to try to understand what it would take to bring schools back in a COVID environment. So I think that was the major thing that has made me pause and and start to focus on that a little bit more than we had.
And related to that, I know one of the things that he's saying, because I need to ask this, is to prioritize students with disabilities, particularly those with complex needs who have not been able access remote learning. Is that something that you're looking at as well?
Yeah, we, most of our kids, you know, we're still the same percentage of about 47% of the kids are on IEPs. But that because the numbers are more, there's greater numbers of them. We haven't had those very involved kinds of kids that some other districts are having to deal with. But we are providing, you know, the way we're going to do support in the hybrid, we may need a few more staff because the classrooms are going to be smaller, but they're still going to have kids who need that additional support. That's one of the details we're drilling down into next week, so.
Yeah, so I'm also, we touched upon this a little bit last time, Ed, about the technology assessment and and those families that that may be lacking the full scale requirements needed for a remote, a successful remote learning environment. Is that assessment also going to be part of the ready to come back to school? And where do we stand on that?
Yeah, we, we had to provide this past spring, we provided a number of families with access through Comcast, I think mostly. It was only 10 bucks a month or something, and they, we were able to give them a hotspot. The freshman laptops have been ordered early and are all going to arrive next, the first week of August. And we're looking at bringing in groups of freshmen to kind of orient them to the technology here over the summer. And then at the same time, we'll be assessing with them their internet access. One of the things that Tony, our assistant principal of admissions did do was ask them all as part of the enrollment process, what their access was at home. And I think he said the other day, I don't know who's on here, that all of them had adequate access of the incoming freshman class, all 182. So yeah, it's on, it's on the top of our mind.
No, no, I, it's, it's hard to do remote learning if you don't have financial or or technology access. And I, I just want to make sure that we're, we're making sure that we are accommodating those that might have both need and and desire.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I have one small question about actually the freshman class. How do you do the introductory introduction to CTE?
Exploratory?
Exactly.
We're working on that.
Because, you know, those are the kids that are going to, you know, choose what they're going to do hopefully for the rest of their lives, or at least.
Well, Kate, we've been working on that, a number of ideas. Well, see, the freshmen are going to be onsite. And they're going to be in academics in the morning for four periods and then in the CTE program for four periods, but only every other week, which is not much different than what they've been doing. So the, I mean, in terms of the access. So it's going to require much more focused exploratory activity. Because we're going to have them for a shorter period of time. There's also been some online resources we've purchased that are designed around exploratory, because you got to remember, most of the country, kids don't choose their CTE major until they're a junior in high school. So there's all kinds of exploratory online resources that we haven't had to use, but are are pretty good. Some of them are being offered at deep discounts as well. So it's going to look different. I want to, I want the kids to choose earlier so they're in their shops earlier, but Katie, Katie may have a different idea and I'm, you know, open to that, obviously. She's my CTE director. I got to listen to her. I listen to everybody.
Okay, so the last question I have is about the summer school and all of that and and the numbers that you were giving for what's available for grants and what you expect it to cost. Is this budgeted? The difference?
Absolute, absolutely not.
Okay, so what do we, how are we dealing with that? No, because it's important, I mean.
No, if you remember, yeah. I cut eight positions.
Okay.
I've reduced the budget significantly in the, fortunately, we have a budget. You remember when, while this planning, we could not assume we were going to have a budget. So we have a budget. And we've, we've reduced that budget quite a bit already to be able to apply different resources to the COVID needs. So we're not going to spend $120,000 on two weeks of summer school. But if we were to have to transport every kid to summer school and provide, pay all the teachers their per diem rate that we would need, that's what it would cost. That would be an excellent summer school. We'd actually be starting school in the summer. So we're going to pare that down to something a little bit more targeted. Once we do all the assessments of the kids, we're going to pull, we're assuming 25% of the kids have lost a significant amount, either CTE or in academics, and those are the kids we're going to target to bring into school. And hopefully their parents will drive them.
No, I think that's a, it's necessary because you're, you definitely have this documented issue of the COVID decline.
Absolutely.
If you don't address it, you're going to address it in September, and that's not the time to do it. So I just was curious to know if we needed to do budget adjustments.
We will, but we'll do them later.
Okay.
We have the money. We have, you know, the pot of money that we've been, has been approved and the reductions we've made, as difficult as they were, are going to be you know, needed to deal directly with the kids.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions on this topic before we move on? I just want to acknowledge all the work that the administration and teachers have done to prepare for this and you know, this is a key reason why we'll need to be meeting in August and look forward to hearing more.
Yep. Oh. Okay, Ford, you want to talk about the school building project? You're muted, Ford.
Ed, you like me muted? For those that don't know, newer members, the building construction team meets weekly every Tuesday morning at 10 o'clock. That includes SCANSKA, our OPM, Castle Booze, our architect, Gil Bain, our general contractor, members of the administration, the finance, and myself and others. This is usually in two, couple of hour meeting. We're now down to an hour. That's really good news. I don't know how many pages we've had before of minutes, maybe 20, 25. Now we're down to about six. So we're gearing down in terms of our open punchless items, we are down to 36. We were well over 5,000. And that's okay. Don't panic. That, that's sort of normal. We, that's still a low percentage of our overall costs and things we did. And those items are really some planning items that Dow is doing and Eaton is doing 12 door frames. I mean, it's really small work and we expect that will be done within the next seven to 10 days, and that will be behind us. We are hoping to have our certificate of occupancy, our final certificate of occupancy around the first of August. What we have to do is show them that we've done the planning that we said we would do. So we're hoping to have that soon. Monday, we met with MSBA just to discuss our closeout with them. One of the items that we need to know is, is can we close out before or do we have to do after the athletic fields? It is an ad alternate. We had it as an ad alternate in our, in our plan. We are using our SCANSKA to help us manage that project. And we are using Castle Booze, our architect to design. Actually, they've done a lot of work already, the, the project, so there will not be a formal closeout of our building until after we've finished the athletic fields. So that's, you know, that's not a wrinkle. Kevin, I think, had was looking at that as an option, but that is now a fact and we know that. So it looks like we're, by the first of August, we may wrap this up and we're going to get part of our Tuesday mornings free. But on the other hand, the athletic fields are also meeting, and we're also meeting on Tuesday. And that process is now been ramped up. I will tell you that we will probably go out and advertise for a general contractor mid-August. By first part of October, our final construction drawing should be done. We will be looking at all our bid documents. And I think we'll be ready to put a shovel in the ground and start then. We anticipate that we will have this all done by the third week or so of September of 2021. So that process is started and thanks to the school committee's vote last time, and I think that is very exciting. Ed, you might want to add anything or?
No, I, I think we're on the right direction. It's exciting. I, we had a little, we, the fields have taken a little bit longer. The demo is taking a little bit longer. We ran into some soil which we've are taking care of, and it's within pretty much the budget we planned on, so. I'm excited to get going on these fields, and I know the kids are. Even though I, I'm guessing we're not going to have any sports this fall, but we'll, we'll have a lot to celebrate next fall when sports open up again.
What Ed referred to, and I should have, I'll get to you in a minute, Jeff, what I, we did have a contamination issue. It is a little larger than we thought. We're still under budget in terms of this part of what we planned for. Don't let this shock you, but it shocked me when I heard the number. They've already taken off campus 29 tons of soil. And that will be probably six or tons more, but that's still under budget, so we're okay. Jeff?
About when will we know what the real price of the fields would be? Because that's obviously determines.
After, after we go out for bids and the general contractors come in and we take a look at final pricing, we then cannot move forward until we come to the school committee and get a final authorization. So I'm assuming that would be probably in the fall.
The fall, okay.
Okay.
Dave, you had a question?
Yeah, did, and and I apologize if you had mentioned it at a previous meeting, but did we ever get a report back on the permitting of the the theater? Does that all take care? We're all set now. All right. Thanks, Ford.
The theater's done, the everything, everything is behind us. I mean, really, just.
No, that's, that's fantastic.
So I'm very pleased.
Good news. Any other questions for Ford? Ford, Ed, anything you want to add?
All set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. It is, you know, nice to hear the progress that's being made. Thank you. And I don't know how not to be surprised at that number that you gave us. Sounds like a lot. Moving on to finance report. Bob, you're on mute.
Thanks for pointing that out. Good evening. Agenda item A is the approval of the fiscal year 20 transfers. This was to request the school committee consider voting to authorize the recommended line item budget transfers in the fiscal year 20 budget. Under school committee policy, these transfers would be required by the school committee, your approval. The intent of these transfers is a housekeeping measure to move identified surplus balances to fund projected under balance, under budgeted line items. This, this will close out the year with all the function codes having a net surplus balance. We are currently projecting an operating surplus balance in the fiscal year 20 expenditure budget to be about $380,784. So I would ask the school committee to vote to approve fiscal year 20 transfers as presented in the memo that I provide you tonight.
I'm moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Jeff?
What is build multi-business office?
That's, that's a great question. It's actually building multiple insurances through the business office. So it's really our insurance package. When we went from the old building to the new building, the new building's worth quite a bit. Uh, when we went from the old building to the new building, the new building's worth quite a bit more. And so, there was an end of the year bill that was very expensive. And that's why that was one of the bigger transfers. I had to move money over to cover that because I want to make sure that each function code comes out with a surplus.
So, insurance because we now have something worth insuring?
Worth a lot more, yes.
Okay, good.
Jennifer?
Yeah, so the, uh, the $380,700, you know, $387,000, is that going into E and D? Is that the surplus?
We always try to project 3% to 5% of a balance so that you'll have that going into E and D for the following year's budget. In fact, that's school committee policy, sorry.
That's okay. Other questions or comments? If not, let's move to a roll call vote. Pam Nurse acting, yes. Go to Arlington.
Michael Ruderman, Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor. Go ahead, Steve.
Steve will do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Lankaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, next item.
Next item is the, uh, approval of the use of fiscal year 20 funds to pay an invoice number 19-194 for, uh, from the Concord Police. So, I provide you with the invoice, uh, from the Concord Police that was unfortunately not submitted in a timely manner back in fiscal year 19. And it's now an outstanding balance, uh, in fiscal year 20. Uh, the police detail that this was for was for a Minuteman hockey game, and the total of this bill is $928.49. So, uh, Mass General Law, Chapter 44, requires a 7/8 vote of approval to authorize a regional school district to pay prior year billing in the current fiscal year. I would ask tonight for a vote for authorization to use the fiscal year 20 funds to pay the attached invoice number 19-194 from the Concord Police as identified in the memo I provided.
I'm moved.
Seconded.
Okay, um, discussion. Any questions?
I think Steve should bring him the check.
Yeah, I don't want to get stopped for speeding, so please approve this.
All right. Just come in late, is that what happened? Because it's, it's dated the 21st of, of February.
Yeah, um, somehow it would, it didn't get paid. I'm not exactly sure. It kind of predates me, the, the bill itself.
It happens.
It come in late, so.
Okay.
Are these amounts ordinary and customary except for the lateness of the invoice themsel- itself?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Let's move to, if not, let's move to roll call vote. Pam Nurse acting, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor, nope. Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Sorry, I gotta, I gotta learn my alphabet.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes, and I just get so excited when I see that Steve's here because he's the only one I have to worry about.
Jennifer Lankaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Okay, thank you. Unanimous vote. Um, moving on to, whoops.
Agenda item C is the approval of surplus items. And I provided a list of surplus items for you tonight. The administration would like to dispose of these items appropriately. School committee policy DN requires the school committee by majority vote to determine whether said equipment is surplus. This is, uh, this is to request for the school committee to vote to determine that the attached list of items is surplus. The administration will then follow the procedures in school committee policy to dispose of the items. I would ask for a vote tonight to determine that the items as described on the document are surplus.
I'm moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Let's, um, Judy.
Um, can these items be donated to any nonprofit or worthy cause?
So, um, because they were bought with, uh, the, the funds, we have to go through this policy. And then, um, after, once the school committee declares it surplus, then we usually, uh, out of responsibility to the taxpayer, we offer it up for sale before we would then get rid of it in, in another fashion. So, it has to go for sale after this.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Bob, do these things join the, uh, general list of, uh, state surplus property that comes out in a very long ledger from time to time?
Um, they usually don't make it that far. Usually, we publish them, uh, we send it out uh, to all the schools to see if other schools might need them. You know, a lot of this is old stuff from the, oh, you know, the old high school. Um, and it's just in storage, taking up space right now that we could probably use.
So, is there any expectation this will generate any value?
Yeah.
It's, yeah, it generates a small amount of value.
You may recall, as we were preparing to leave the old building, we had, uh, put things up on munici bid on a regular basis. I think we generated close to $70,000 or so over the course of that year.
But this is a fairly extensive list. I mean, this is, is this the last of the stuff from the old building that we are looking to?
Yes.
I hope so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Let's move to roll call vote. Pam Nurse acting, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
People do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Lankaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Okay, um, item D.
And item D is the approval of the monthly donations. Um, this, this month, we have one donation, and we're grateful for that, and I'd ask that you approve the list of monthly donations.
I'm moved.
Seconded.
Any, um, any questions? Any discussion? To roll call, Pam Nurse acting, yes.
Uh, Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
People do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Lankaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving to subcommittee reports, policy subcommittee, and we do not have anyone from the policy subcommittee here today. Um, what we have on the agenda is the vote for second reading of the, um, new policy we had talked about last week, which would allow the, um, school committee to appoint, um, sort of, um, you know, experts that we would need from time to time to our subcommit, subcommittees and task forces. These would be non-voting members. The policy is in your packet on page 18. Um, Alice has, um, noted changes, I believe, from first reading. I do not believe any of them are substantive.
Um, I have a question about the, the same training that school committee members undergo is required. Is that's only relevant to the open meeting law, correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, because they don't need to go to the school committee training or any of that, okay?
No, 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 no.
You just have to do that online open meeting law.
Right.
Not okay if you do X, okay, thank you.
Yeah, they might have to do ethics also. Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, is there a title to this policy or a policy number? I couldn't, I didn't notice it on the, uh, in the packet.
Um, I do not know the answer to that. Ed, do you know the answer to that?
No, I thought it was, I don't know the, I was looking in the previous minutes to see if it was identified by a, you know, the letter codes.
My understanding is that it wasn't actually part of the state code system. It was something we were trying to do ourselves in order to, to broaden our ability to include expertise in our, in our subcommittees.
It would still need a title, though.
Right, no, and I, I think maybe in the previous, let's look at the minutes, because, um,
It's called Advisory Subcommittee and Task Force Policy.
Right.
Um, Jeff, did you have a, you mean, Doc?
Uh, yes. Oh, I have no trouble in voting for this today, but I also have no trouble in, um, postponing it until our August meeting since we have, probably going to have an August meeting, if people would feel more comfortable. So, Alice could be here to present it and answer all the questions.
I'm good with that.
I, I agree. That way, if we, if we need an actual title or, or, um, listing number, we can get that ratified or squared up before we actually vote on it.
Sensible.
Okay, is there anyone who prefers that we move forward with this now rather than putting it off till August? If not, then why don't we, um, put this on the agenda for the August meeting? Um, uh, the other piece under that was changes to the, uh, student handbook and added something on that.
I put that as a placeholder in case there was something that came out from the department. There may be some policies we have to look at, or, you know, the student handbook is considered a policy, so I bring it to the school committee. But, um, and there may be some changes in regards to, you know, the requirement of masks and social distancing, but, um, I'll bring those to you in August if the department is recommending some of those.
That's reasonable.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to secretary's report. Um, we have, um, two sets of minutes to approve. Um, why don't we take them one at a time? Can, have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 9th meeting?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any, um, any changes to the minutes? Uh, let's go to roll call. Pam Nurse acting, yes.
Arlington, no vote. I was not present for the meeting.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
People do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Lankaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington abstain.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Okay, let's move on. Can we have a motion to approve the June 23rd minutes as presented?
I'm moved.
Seconded.
Any, uh, changes? Okay, Pam Nurse acting, yes.
Arlington abstains.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
People do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Lankaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington abstain.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Okay, um, we are moving right along tonight. The next order of business is our reorganization and election of officers. And, um, our first order of business on this is a motion to allow the superintendent to preside temporarily.
I'm moved.
Seconded.
Okay, and we do a roll, I, I assume anyone have anything to say about that? Let's move to our, you don't get to vote yet. Um, moving to the roll call, Pam Nurse acting, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
People do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Lankaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Okay. So, this, uh, temporary presiding is for the purpose of the superintendent accepting nominations from the committee for chair. Um, I should probably, and Jeff, correct me if I've got any of this wrong, but in order to be an officer, you have to have been a school committee member for at least one year, is it? It's in the bylaws.
The chair, I'm not sure it's true for all of the positions, but it's definitely true for the chair. We'd have to look at the minutes, the, um,
The bylaws.
Bylaws to look at the others.
Yeah, well, Judy and Michael, I think, have the bylaws, and so does Pam. We're going to send them out to everybody again because I think we should make sure everybody has everything. All right, any questions? If no questions, I'll open the floor to nominations for chair for the 2020-21. Jeff Stuland Needham.
I nominate Pam Nurse as chair.
I'll second.
Okay, technically, there's no seconds right now.
Okay, sorry.
It's the only time I get to tell you what to do.
I will vote for her, so that's my second.
Are there any other nominations from the floor for chair? Seeing none, I will ask the nominee, as is our tradition, are you willing to serve another year as chair? Hearing yes, we will now go forward with a vote.
For a moment, just in case someone else wants to run in.
How'd that go?
Yeah, I don't, yes, I would be willing.
Thank you. So, uh, we'll now close nominations for chair, and we'll proceed to a vote, a roll call vote. Beginning with Acton.
Okay, Pam Nurse acting, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve will do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Lankaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
It is unanimous. Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, and I now turn the meeting back over to you.
Okay, um, I would like to open up the floor for nominations for Vice Chair.
I'll nominate, I'd like to nominate, uh, Jeff Stuland.
So, okay, Jeff Stuland, are there any other nominations? Jeff, will you accept?
Uh, I will accept, but I would like the committee to know that this will be my last year on the school committee coming up.
Do we get to discuss that? Let's get through this. No, um, if there are, if there are no other nominations, I will close the nominations and we will move to roll call. Uh, Pam Nurse acting, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve will do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Lankaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Um, I'd like to open up the floor for nominations for Secretary. Jeff?
I nominate Alice DeLuca as Secretary.
That's what she gets for missing a meeting. Are there any other nominations? Alice is not here, but she has indicated that she would accept. Now, is that good enough for this purpose?
Yep.
Okay. If there are no other nominations, I'd like to close the nominations and move to the roll call. Um, Pam Nurse acting, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
People do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Lankaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Okay.
I could not be.
Well, we will let, um, Alice know of her election.
Congratulations.
Hi, do you have a comment?
Yes, Jeff.
The comment is, thank you again, Pam, for being willing to do this for another year. I'm very grateful. I'm very pleased with how you've conducted yourself the last year. I'm very grateful that you're willing to do this job again for another year.
Well, thank you, Jeff. Um, as you all know, I need a little help in this, so I appreciate the way that you all have stepped up to, uh, to help. Um, if there is, um, well, actually, just one last thought before I move to adjournment, but one before that, Ed.
Just while we're all here, or most of us, what does August 11th look like for folks?
I can make it work.
I'm good.
Michael is good.
I'm good.
Judy's good.
I'm good.
Ford.
Jeff is good.
Yep, all right.
I will be on vacation, but hopefully I will have internet access where I, I will be.
Steve?
Yeah, I just got a new phone. I had it on my calendar. Uh, I'm good.
Okay, you need the alphabet and a phone, uh, phone training.
I need some real.
I'll give you those magnetic letters to put on the. So we'll meet again on the 11th then, is that fine? So we don't have to go through some other thing here. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and between now and then, you know, we will be doing our committee reorganizations over the next, you know, month or two. I don't know if we'll have it done by August, but certainly August and September. So I'd like everyone to be thinking about, you know, your, the committees that you've been on or would be interested in. And, you know, we'll be having conversations about that.
Pam?
Yes.
Finance Committee just has one member now. And, you know, we have to approve warrants and things, so we need to give that some thought.
I have volunteered to join the finance committee when that time comes, so.
I'd be sooner than you think, Jennifer.
I know, I know. Just tell me when. I love numbers.
Yeah.
You're the favorite.
Yes, thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, Steve. And, you know, and maybe we will get you a little more support as well. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn? All moved.
Second, second.
Okay, Pam Nurse acting yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
People do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes. And Judith and Michael, welcome, welcome, welcome again.
Yes, with that, we are so happy to have you with us. You know, look forward to working with you moving forward. So thank you, everyone.
Actually, meeting you in person, that would be nice.
Wouldn't that be nice at some point in the future?
Eventually.
Well, we will see each other on Zoom on the 11th.
All right, take care.
Thanks, everyone. Stay safe.
Take care, everybody.